We should really put the YouTube app. Or just do.
Yeah. Okay. Soon as this is up and going, we'll get going. Hey, good. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November meeting of the zoning board of review. I'm Kate Atwater Butcher, the chair. Jen Brady, our zoning official, is right here. And Jane Cormier is our stenographer for the evening. We do not have our attorney on. Yeah. What do you call that? It's not Zoom? Is it Zoom that she's on?
Zoom.
Yeah.
Zoom. We broadcast, but we are broadcasting on YouTube. And I'll let the rest of the board introduce themselves.
Robert Lammerow.
Susan Bush.
Stephen Phillippe.
Robert Kloster.
Corey Black.
There's a couple of issues this evening that are not, that are on the agenda that are going to come off the agenda. The Hofeltz, Gregory T. and Aaron O'Leary, their public hearing, they've requested their further application to be withdrawn. And they're waiting the planning board to make some decisions on the zoning ordinance. And I will make a motion to withdraw that application without prejudice.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
And then the, under the decisions on the, on the agenda, the David Russo decision has been rendered already. It was rendered on 11/13/25. Now, the third thing is I'm going to make a motion to move the decisions of the ciders up to the beginning of the agenda, as I am recused on the rest of the agenda. Sorry.
Just the ciders, but then what about muddy paws? Oh, you're the case.
I'm recused on that. So, okay. Any, all in favor?
Great. This is a long one, so bear with me. The application of Mitchell, Cider, and Lisa Beck, Plat 11, Lot 37, Fire Number 787, Snake Hole Road, for a special use permit, under Article 3, Section 306E, and Article 4, Section 406, for the expansion of a single-family dwelling and an accessory residential structure. I move to approve the special use permit application based on the following findings of fact. The property is located at Plat 11, Lot 37, Fire Number 787, Snake Hole Road, and is located in the residential A-zone. The property is approximately 147,022 square feet in total area. The application proposes to partially demolish and move a part of an existing cottage to another location on the lot and to be used as a two-bedroom accessory residential structure, construct a new five-bedroom, four-and-a-half-bathroom principal dwelling unit, and also constructing an accessory structure, which will be used as a garage or studio, a pool, patio, driveway, and new leach field. A special use permit was required for this application because the proposal is in excess of the standards for individual building footprint area, total gross area, and building volume established in Section 406 of the zoning ordinance. The proposed individual building footprint of the principal dwelling is 2,994 square feet. The proposed gross footprint area is 5,866 square feet, and the proposed building volume is 55,000 cubic feet. The proposed residential development includes a 2,994-square-foot principal dwelling, an 832-square-foot accessory residential structure, a 510-square-foot accessory structure to be used as a garage or studio, a 190-square-foot accessory structure to be used as a shed, plus 740 square feet of additional porches and decks, an in-ground pool with 275 square feet of impervial, impermeable paving, and 11,403 square feet of permeable paving. The total building lot coverage will be 3.99%, and the total lot coverage will be 7.31%. There is a new eight-bedroom onsite wastewater treatment system proposed, and the applicant has received a favorable advisory from the planning board dating August 19th, 2025, and the conservation commission dated September 19th, 2025. The applicant and their architect have designed the layout and placement of buildings to relate harmoniously to the terrain and to existing buildings in the vicinity. The scale, height, bulk, and proportions of the proposed building, including roof style, facade openings, architectural style, and building materials, have been designed to comply with Section 514 of the zoning ordinance and are compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed dwelling is located within the setbacks. The prominent facade of the new house is rendered to appear as the main farmhouse/estate with attached additions would have, would have involved, evolved, excuse me. Dimensionally, the proposed dwelling will complement the surrounding houses. It will reflect the architectural character of the neighborhood. The applicant and their landscape architect have proposed a landscape design that will not adversely affect the established physical and visual pattern of land. According to the plans, the landscape will develop in such a manner as to be in keeping with the character of the surrounding neighborhoods and in accordance with good development practices by minimizing vegetation and soil removal, retaining existing vegetation where desirable, and keeping any grade changes in character with the general appearance of neighboring areas. The landscape plan includes good development practices by retaining existing vegetation where possible and keeping grade changes in character with the general appearance of the neighborhood. The proposed use and structures will not create a nuisance or serious hazard to pedestrians or landward and seaward vehicles and their users or have negative effects on the island and neighborhood character as it is located in a residential neighborhood is within the setbacks, and the proposed use will remain residential. Additionally, the applicant is proposing a driveway of peystone paving on pervious surface, which will improve accessibility for landward vehicles. Adequate and appropriate infrastructure facilities included but not limited to sewage disposal and drainage will be provided to assure the proper operation of the proposed user structure. The onsite wastewater treatment system plan provided by Mount Hope Engineering details the sewage treatment plans for the new dwelling that will accommodate the larger-sized home. The landscape plan includes dry wells for stormwater management, and the applicant will obtain the proper permit for an onsite wastewater treatment system from DEM, which will not cause a degradation of the quality of surface or groundwater. There will not be significant negative impact on important natural resources as the maps and plans submitted by the applicant show that there is no presence of habitats or species listed as endangered, threatened, or of special concern on the subject property, and that there are no historic or archaeological resources identified in the comprehensive plan or a document referenced therein on the subject property. The dwelling unit will be moved within the property within setbacks. The property does not abut an important natural or historic resource and/or contain any within. Care should be taken in any culturally or environmentally significant resources or artifacts are uncovered. To the degree reasonably possible, dependency on individual motor vehicles for access by users shall be reduced through site selection. I example relatively central or proximate to users. Development, design, and facilities, good pedestrian and bicycle provisions, site arrangement facilitating shuttle buses or other auto alternatives, onsite mixture of uses, and proposed operations. The proposed development is likely to increase dependency of users on motor vehicles as the expanded living will now allow for more gas remote from off-island transportation. The detached garage provides good storage for mechanical and electrical vehicles that could reduce island congestion and pollution. Construction will also likely increase motor vehicle use by supply material and workers, by supplying materials and workers to the site. Efforts should be taken during construction to minimize traffic in the area. The proposed use and structures will not cause a degradation of the quality of surface or groundwater. The landscape plan provided by Design Outside LLC dated September 19th, 2025, proposes a leaching field as well as silt fences for soil erosion control. This will help mitigate the degradation of quality of surface and groundwater. The proposed use of the property is consistent with the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, included but not limited to the stated purpose of residential A-zone. The applicant has met the performance standards of Section 514 of the zoning ordinance. The proposed development is consistent with the goals and policies laid out in the Town of New Shorams Comprehensive Plan, specifically Goal LU1, achieve a balanced and harmonious development pattern that preserves Block Island's environmental and aesthetic quality and promotes economic vitality and overall livability. This construction does not require a variance for any dimensional standard, including lot building coverage, lot coverage, or building height. All performance standards contained in Section 514 residential structures in the RA-zone, as applicable, have been met. The proposed principal dwelling structure contains a deck elevated above the first floor, which is anchored so that there are at least two walls of the building bordering the deck, and said deck does not exceed 1,200 square feet. This decision is subject to the following conditions. The proposed structure shall be located and built in strict conformance with the site plan and building plans dated September 18th, 2025, and submitted with this application. And the existing kitchen in the cottage shall be removed when the structure is moved, and therefore, the structure shall comply with the definition of an accessory residential structure.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
John? Thank you.
Can you go back to the meeting schedule?
Oh, sure. Has everybody looked at the meeting schedule?
Yes.
Wow. Thanksgiving's really late this year, huh? Next year? That'd be right. That's not right.
I have one issue with the schedule. I'm not coming here on Thanksgiving.
Is it Thanksgiving? It's Thanksgiving on my boat.
It, it's, it says Thursday and whatever date it is.
That's Thanksgiving, right?
It's supposed to be, no, it's the Wednesday date.
It's, so let's wait, let's look, let's look.
But we're meeting tonight on a Thursday.
So it's.
We're meeting 19th.
It should be the 19th.
The 19th is the, yeah, the 19th. Yeah.
Do you want to keep the time six? Anything else?
Yeah. And we can't do Wednesday because the council meeting.
Council, right.
Right. Is everything else okay with vacations? School vacations?
It's on April 8th, but.
I might not be able to.
I should be.
I should be here. Yeah, I should.
I feel so free that I don't have to worry about that anymore. I feel so free that I didn't have to, you know, 20 years on the zoning board. I had to worry about vacations.
Oh, yeah.
Are you giving that back to me?
No. Well, do you want to?
Yeah, I want to look at it. I just want to look at it. April, but Robbie, you, you're gonna go late April?
I don't have plans right now.
Yeah.
It's the week after.
Okay.
Um. February is a little dicey for me, but I won't know that until I know it.
January. The January meeting.
The date. The date.
So everybody else here in January? I may not be, but.
Well.
I don't know. It's about, about labor. It's about labor. Yeah. Yeah. Um. They know it, so they haven't. Yeah, I'm good with this. I'll make a motion to adopt the meeting schedule for the 2026 year with the change to the November meeting is being November 19th, 2026.
You want to move anywhere?
No, I, I should be okay.
We don't have anything scheduled for.
I should be okay. Yeah. I should be okay.
I'll take two minutes.
I just get nervous. Um, yeah, anyway, I made a motion.
I'll make a second thing.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, great. Okay. Um, you don't need me for minutes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You know, anyway.
You want to do the application first?
Yeah.
Yeah. Application of Matt Mazzia Yellow, Plat 15, Lot 132, Fire Number 997, Old Dun Road. Second request for two-year extension to zoning decision dated July 28, 2022, for an application for a variance for Section 306C. 306C to demolish an existing single-family dwelling and two sheds. Construct a single-family dwelling accessory residential structure pool and three accessory structures.
Joe?
Basically, he had not been able to complete his budget yet for values. So he'll explain to you next month, in January or soon. And we're simply asking for another two-year extension if we can get it.
We did give it, we did give an extension that was.
No, you actually gave him.
We gave him a two-year.
You gave him the first two-year extension.
Right.
Now we've asked the first set.
It's only five years from the original.
From the original, okay.
Did he pull the building permit yet?
He's not pulling it.
No.
Did what?
He has not pulled, he has not pulled.
No, no, no. If he did, we wouldn't be here.
You just have to schedule a fair public hearing for January 28th.
Okay. This is, you felt good with this, the application?
Yeah.
Okay. January 28th, good for you?
That's good for me, yes.
Okay. I want to schedule it for January 28th?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Mr. Cider had a minor stroke yesterday. He looked like he would be, he wanted me to thank you.
Okay. Okay. So you said Hofeltz is.
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn, okay. So the next, we'll go to the public hearing of Demos, the family trust. Gregory and Desiree Demos, trustees, Plat 3, Lot 108, applicant first, variance under Section 306C, in addition to a single-family dwelling.
And before, before you begin, I just want to let you know that you have, there's copies here if anybody needs a copy, and then we're going to mark exhibits starting A. Because we did the number last night, just so you know.
Okay. You're gonna. Refresh my memory why this got, this got moved. Wall plane, okay. Okay. Okay.
Freshwater 11, permit.
But it was mostly wall plane at the time, yeah. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. May I proceed?
Yes. Swift.
He's.
Right.
Jay, can you square any witnesses in when you get to that point?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Hamza Chowdhury. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight on behalf of the Demos family. Here with me today is Mr. Greg Demos and Mark from Shirensia. So by way of reminder, Mr. Chairman, we appeared before you in July, did a full presentation about the proposed project, which will primarily build on my client's existing foundation to allow the Demos family more space to enjoy their home. You heard, by way of reminder, expert testimony from Sergio Shirensia, our engineer, about how all the variance standards have been met. The property is currently used for a single-family dwelling and has a building footprint of 1,684 square feet. The owner proposes remodeling the existing home, including certain alterations to the exterior of the existing home with a new building footprint of 1,928 square feet, which is a net increase of only 244 square feet. It's important to note that this only represents a 1.8% increase from what is there right now. So in our humble opinion, a 1.8% increase is a minor. And we're going to, well, and perhaps you remember why the, we need to ask for relief, but this is a unique property with a D-Street right-of-way that eats approximately 10,000 square feet of a 23,000-square-foot lot, which kind of sets off all of the calculations, as you know. Moreover, I wanted to note that currently stormwater isn't managed here, and under this proposed project, stormwater is managed. We're happy to report that on Monday, DEM granted us freshwater wetlands approval and permit. That's actually been submitted, and Ms. Brady has copies for the record as well. Yes, please, Jen.
Exhibit A. Here.
No.
So, Mr. Chairman, at the last hearing in July, you'll recall that the board suggested that we can reconsider the design of the project to comply with the board's interpretation of wall plane. After discussing with Mr. Demos and our architect, our client decided to undertake the time and expense to redesign the house to comply with the board's view of the definition. On September 4th, I sent the revised plans to your solicitor, Attorney Browning, for review and to circulate among the board. Attorney Browning was nice enough to report that she did not receive any feedback on the proposal. As a result, we finalized those plans, and we submitted them to this board for their review. We've also included a letter from our architect detailing how these changes comply with the interpretation of the wall plane definition and how it meets the zoning ordinance as well.
Mark that as applicable to exhibit.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
So it's a letter from Douglas Gilpin, Jr., architect?
And Mark will take us through the changes, so you can see them visually, so you can track them and make that an easy job for you. But at the request of the Nature Conservancy, we added vehicle tracks to the seasonal storage and identified additional parking on the structure. So Mark will run through that later. In order to respect the board's time, we don't want to redo the entire presentation from last time, but we just wanted to briefly remind the board that we're seeking dimensional relief from the maximum lot building coverage and the maximum lot coverage, and I've met all the standards for granting the variance. The project's proposed modest net increase of 244 square feet or 1.8% from its existing conditions is simply to ensure that the Demos family can be a good neighbor to the Nature Conservancy and Ms. Josie Merck, who's the neighbor to the east, and to allow the seasonal storage of their items. So, Mark, can you lead us through that? But you might want to swear him in.
I was just sworn in.
Oh, yeah.
Mark Castellanos. You can use this. Do you need me to repeat that? Okay.
Jeffrey.
Hey, just use this one.
Love that.
All right, so I'm just going to briefly take you through the changes that were requested at the last meeting. For the site plan, as Hamza mentioned, the abutting properties, Nature Conservancy and Josie Merck requested that this existing travelway not be used to access the proposed storage area and that, you know, no parking would ever take place on this easement area. What we've done, the owner had agreed to is we added permeable, you know, tire track, some type of sturdy product that would allow a car to travel safely, staying outside of the existing travelway and staying within the property of the client and having access to the storage area. And then additionally, two legal parking spots that would be off the travelway here and also, you know, either remain grass or be some type of permeable surface. Any questions on both additions? All right, so I wasn't here at the July meeting, but my understanding was the hang-up was in this wall plane on the south face, which spanned this entirety of the building by the board's definition and was not compliant because it went over the 45-foot maximum, so. And Doug Glatter, he kind of discusses the changes that were made.
And that's the, that's the one that was hitting Forrest before.
Yes, right. So this is what it looked like in comparison. So he has that same south face. He's now reduced the wall height down lower. He's changed the roof line from a hip roof down to a gable. And now he's at 36 and a half inches below the 45.
On that section.
Yeah, on that section. And then looking at from this opposite view, this is now a gable roof. Actually, look at the inside of it. So no longer a hip roof. This is still the gable. You'll see the roof behind it and the roof for the second half of the, the last half of the building.
And looking at that south and that east view, is there a jog where he dropped that roof plane? Is there a recess?
Building on the, the existing foundation.
No. So then that wall plane would be approximately 48?
You know, he's, he's stating that the wall plane
From.
stands where the wall height is dropped.
But there's no recess, correct?
No. Because it's an existing foundation, Robbie. So what they would have had to do is overhang this house over the foundation, this part of the house, to be able to change, to be able to change the wall plane.
Right, but.
So they're saying because they dropped the roof and because they dropped the break right there, that cuts the wall plane.
Because I always thought that we needed to have a minimum of a six-foot recess in the building in order to do that.
Corey, did some of your decision for cider talk about wall plane and building plane?
Not specifically, but it was, he said that it met the, the regulation of 14. I think it's a, is that where the wall plane is?
Correct. So during that hearing, there was discussion about the consistent roof height and, and wall plane.
Right, and.
So that's up to you.
So they're saying that it's no longer of a consistent length.
Right, and also in Mr. Gilpin's memo here, he said our zoning ordinance max building plane length is 65.
I don't think so.
I'm looking at, reading it right now.
Built.
Built the eight.
But the maximum is 75.
Maximum 75, but in his memo, he was quoting that our zoning is 65.
Uh, for building plane is 75 and wall plane is 45.
Correct. And that's what I was saying with a wall plane being 45, that wall plane is greater than what we allow because there is not a six-foot recess.
If you interpret it as a consistent roof profile, you know, how, I guess you're going to have to read the definition of the wall.
A consistent building height requires a minimum six-foot recess in building facade.
Well, it's not a consistent building height. The building height is dropping here. I think that was.
And that is for figures 4B and 4C, and they have the same as well as different.
I'm not an architect. I'm sorry. I could, I can only interpret what I saw that Doug put together based on what his feedback was from the board.
What figures did you say? 4B?
4B and 4C, yes.
Can we see those figures? 4B and 4C?
It's with, I'm saying in reference to our zoning ordinance.
I'll got it. I see what you mean.
Under 4514?
Under appendix I.
See, this is a different, like.
You want to look at.
Look at this on the.
We're going to create appendix. What's the difference?
It's just under a foot.
Yeah.
91 and it's a 90 and 16ths of an inch.
So what do you think it should be broken for?
It should be chopped.
Side by side.
Okay. Save with the 45-foot max. In order to get the 75-foot max, you have to have a minimum of 6 feet.
Oh, set.
Sess between the two planes.
Got it. Minimum six-foot jog, you said.
Or a story change is, I'm fairly confident that was the difference with cider. So you talked about the wall plane and the building plane. There was a 16-foot recess on one side. The other side had, did not have consistent roof profile, roof line. It was a whole story. Not a foot or two inches. It was.
A whole story.
I'm sorry, I'm the designer.
No, I understand. We had hoped last time that the designer would be here.
Unfortunately, he's down in Florida.
Yeah, we tried to get here for October, and then there was a snap with that as well.
We didn't have a quorum for October. And then in January, the computer wouldn't restart. So it's kind of our fault.
Yeah, so, you know, we did our best in order to do what we believe would have required, would have met with your definition. We did take the extra step to circulate the drafts prior to finalizing it with your solicitor, who I believe, I don't know, but I believe circulated it to this board as well.
Yes, you have the, the Gilpin's plans. No, absolutely.
If it's an existing foundation, can a variance be granted for that?
Let me ask you, is the foundation under this hall the existing?
Yes.
Even where?
Except for, except for the seasonal storage. I think that's the only difference.
The back pot, yeah.
So we're just trying to stay within the footprint, you know, to respect the wetlands and the existing structure. So, you know, we're trying to comply here. Again, I'm not an architect either, but we did undertake this effort in order to try to make this work for the board. And we, and we believed we had succeeded at that time.
Let me see where the seasonal storage is. So what you, well, no.
This is the.
The existing foundation. They, because what I was gonna say was they could have jogged to go back to where the seasonal storage is and got less square footage, but they wouldn't have been able to use the existing foundation.
I know what you're saying.
You follow me? And I'm assuming that, let's go look at that seasonal storage with the site plan, whether.
On the site plan?
On the site plan, yeah. So you see what I'm saying about making a jog? They could have made a jog, but you would have had to demolish the foundation and not be on the same foundation, which they aren't doing a lot of change anyway, so.
Yeah, it would be significantly decreasing his footprint. There, if it was a six-foot minimum. I mean, you would think that the jog would then have to come out, but then that's gonna help.
Well, jog would be on the southeast corner.
Right, the other side.
Alright, here.
Right.
You know, taking that portion, six foot probably.
You'd have to demolish part of the foundation and rebuild the foundation.
Or jog it this way, increase the footprint, but then let that pass to our.
Sure. It all peters to him. He's not the architect.
So really, like, once you close the public hearing and deliberate and discuss the wall plane issue, but you might want to go through and see if there are any other exhibits or testimony.
No, aside, I was gonna just briefly hear from Mr. Demos, but Mr. Chairman, you know, I would, I would rather continue this if there are concerns for the board rather than, you know, proceed with a denial because that's just not what we're looking for. What we're trying to do is accommodate that. So I just wanted to put that out there for whatever it's worth. So I'm happy to engage in whatever we need to do, but we, our architect, you know, reviewed the notes that we received and thought that this indeed met the definition just because it is not of a consistent roof type or height.
Sure.
And as a result.
I would say to you that you've heard some of the concerns of the board.
Yep.
So you make that decision.
Yep. May I have a moment with my client?
Sure.
And also check the integrity of the foundation to verify whether or not you're gonna have to tear it down anyway. Because, I mean, if it's fine and you can reuse it.
Right.
But.
How old is the house? Do you know?
Uh, she's 81.
So it's got a concrete foundation?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like it. Yeah.
Okay.
It's a concrete foundation, if you know what I'm like.
Well, if, just one thing to, before we go anywhere, Bob will not be at the January meeting, so we're gonna be down to four members again.
Okay.
Just because we've had quorum issues, I just want to point that out.
Thank you. So probably February?
Still proceed with four members.
Okay.
There was a state law amendment.
Okay.
Last couple of years, so it used to be five.
I'll be here if, you'll be here.
I just wanted to.
I thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I represent the Nature Conservancy, and we appreciate the changes in the plans. We appreciate the parking. We, we hope that the, we would hope that you would require that the driveway be constructed with something so that it doesn't just turn into lawn, so some sort of nothing impermeable, obviously, but those tracks actually that show that they exist. And that the soap fencing is shown, be installed prior to construction and be maintained through construction. I think that has to be anyways, but we would, those would be our concerns. You want all the work to be confined to the site, not this bill over under ours.
Okay.
What would you like for the driveway again?
He wants it to be delineated as a road, so it's not just abandoned and they use.
Okay.
Right, some sort of gravel or something, something, something that, and I think Mr. Castellanos understands how to do that.
A road, talk like a road and walk like a road.
Yeah, exactly. But be very, be very narrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No.
Continue it until, make a motion to continue it until January 28th.
All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Can we ask Karen to weigh in? The idea of a variance on the wall plane?
You still need to make a motion for money pause?
I know, I need to read it.
You was jumping.
Alright, are you, are you ready?
Yeah.
Is everybody ready?
We're ready.
I make a motion to approve the application by Deborah Frost and Christopher DeCaro, Muddy Paws LLC, for a variance in section 308(c) and a special use permit for the reconfiguration of a first floor and to add a second floor to a dwelling. This is an expansion of a previously approved special use permit under a detached multifamily development. The motion is based on following findings of fact. One, the property is located at 149 Old Town Road, Lot 6, Lot 72-2 in a residential zone and is one of four condominium dwellings located on the property. The property currently consists of a one-story cottage with debt with a gross footprint area of 1,130 square feet and a lot coverage of 25.9%. 25% is the maximum allowed. Two, the applicants propose to reconfigure the first floor and add a second story to the dwelling with a deck above the existing deck. This requires expansion of a previously approved special use permit under a detached multifamily development, approving construction of a second floor and deck. Deborah Frost testified that there will be no change to the gross footprint area of the dwelling. She also testified that the land in question is owned outright by Muddy Paws LLC and is not part of the condominium. Three, the building to be altered, condominium three, exists on a lot with four total buildings. None of the other buildings will be altered. A previous special use permit dated September 26, 2006 permitted a variance in lot area for the number of units making Lot 6, Lot 72 a permitted use on a prior existing non-performing legal lot, legal lot of record. Four, the application received favorable advisories from the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board and a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic District Commission. Five, the proposed development is aligned with the town's comprehensive plan and zoning code and is consistent with the purpose of section 308 of the zoning ordinance. The proposed development is consistent with the goals and policies laid out in the Town and New Shores Comprehensive Plan, specifically goal LU1, achieve a balanced and harmonious development pattern that preserves block island's environmental and aesthetic quality and promotes economic vitality and overall livability. Because the lot coverage exceeds the maximum allowed by 0.9%, 25 versus 25.9%, a variance should be permitted, given that the proposed additions are consistent with the cultural and visual character of the surrounding condominiums and general area. Six, the proposed use or structure is appropriate for the specific site and is compatible with adjacent buildings in form placement and design. Architectural plans by W. Douglas Gilpin Jr., FAIA Architect, comma, PLC, are consistent with the scale, bulk, and height of the buildings on the same plot, and the facade and outer form of the home will follow the original structure's visual language. Seven, the proposed use as developed will not adversely affect the established physical and visual pattern of land use and will not have negative effects on island and neighborhood character. The existing sewage disposal system and drainage will remain. The development will not adversely affect the established physical land use because the proposed development does not include any plans to alter vegetation, ridges, or the surrounding landscape. It is within the vernacular of the surrounding neighborhood. Eight, the residential property will remain in use as a home, thus having no effect on pedestrians or landworthy seaward vehicles and their users. Nine, there will be not, there will not be significant negative impact on important natural resources, including but not limited to habitats or species listed as endangered, threatened, or special concern to the Rhode Island Natural Heritage Program or on historic or archaeological resources identified in the comprehensive plan or a document referenced therein. Considering the proximity due upon, effort should be taken during construction to minimize any adverse effects on the nearby environment. Ten, the proposed use or structure will not cause a nuisance or serious hazards to pedestrians or landworthy seaward vehicles and their users. Eleven, the property is within the vicinity of off-island transportation. Efforts should be taken during construction to minimize traffic in the area. Twelve, there will be no change to the groundwater filtration system. Efforts should be taken during construction to minimize adverse effects on the flawed surface of groundwater. Thirteen, the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area and is not due to a physical or economic disability of the applicant except, accepting those physical disabilities addressed in 45-24-30A16. Fourteen, the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant. Fifteen, the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance of the comprehensive plan upon which it is based. or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which it is based. Sixteen, in granting a dimensional variance, that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted amounts to more than a mere inconvenience, meaning that relief sought is minimal to a reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use to which the property is proposed to be devoted. The fact that a use may be more profitable or that a structure may be more valuable after the relief is granted is not grounds for relief. The zoning board of review or where unified development review is enabled pursuant to forty-five dash twenty-four dash forty-six four twenty-four, the planning board of commission has the power to grant dimensional variances where the use is permitted by special use permit. Seventeen, the ordinance additionally shall provide that an applicant applied for and be issued a dimensional variance in conjunction with the special use permit. If the special use could not exist without the dimensional variance, the zoning board of review or where unified development review is enabled pursuant to forty-five dash twenty-four dash forty-six point four, the planning board or commission shall consider the special use permit and the dimensional, dimensional variance together to determine if granting the special use is appropriate based on each respective special use criteria and the dimensional variance evidentiary standards. The approval is subject to the following conditions, one, the construction must be in substantial conformance with plans submitted.
Second.
Right, so it's Corey, uh, Corey, Susan, Rob and Steve voting.
So I need to. Like, why, why this business, why about? Uh, the traditional matches with.
The meeting was at five twenty? I'm sitting top five twenty-three.
Okay, are we talking about minutes?
Yes.
Yes, I need to fix uh the one, the thirteen, twenty, but the twenty-second one.
What do you have to fix?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the uh October twenty-second, twenty-five minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, you still have November thirteen.
We've got to do November, I make a motion to uh approve the minutes for November thirteen to twenty twenty-five with the uh correction as noted.
Bye.
Bye.
Motion passes. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. During the meeting, during the meeting.